Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, adoption of the agenda?
Not today.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, we have a presentation. April 2019 ballot measure.
Good evening. Want to thank our all for speaking. This is an information on just one of the review where what's the feeling? April 2nd agenda. As far as processes need, it's a half of 12%. One and a half of 12% sales tax for the sheriff department. To continue the current operations and future operations in the facility. The revenue generated by the sales tax will be used by the state statute origin. Will through reverse compensation and the safety equipment of the officers. And for future capital purposes of the facility. How will the sales tax be used for the sheriff's office? Well, the sheriff's office has been around the community, been a trainee for a long time. With passages, the sales tax, the 2020, the revenue generated by the processes need could help provide a financial compensation to employees that is more than minimum wage. Current the society intention officers that are employed at the facility that are over 10,200 and they sit there to do or make $10 expenses in an hour. That is 22,464 dollars a year. The commission that that is that are out in the unit is protected as a service. One of us are asked that are generating 11 days in an hour. We're 24,544 dollars a year. I don't want to steer you wrong. They do get reimbursed, reimbursed in the state or the county does and takes their salary at 30,000 because it takes something from salary. It's a agreement that we've filed for each year and have to be served above all cases. We see that that will boost your salary at 30,000. That not guarantee money, but our grant. We, we as the county sheriff's office throughout the state reserve, each county, they serve civil process paperwork to the citizens. There's a $10 fees associated with the civil process paperwork. It contributes money to that state's monthly salary. And that money is one of them because of the private process servers that attorneys require to go out and serve the civil process paperwork. Whenever private process server serves that paperwork, they take money out of the desk of office. I have to make the raises that she just was been in the office since it is that basis. However, because of that they sell minimum salary, they may be under 30,000 dollars. They may not see the raises. That raise would be to the state, they have more than 500,544. The county is also affected by the Department of Corrections of E.T. County and the state reserve. The state was over 40,000 dollars. State license has been in and off since 4014. The O.S. up to 300,000 dollars. As of January 1st, they can send out state license into the state that we were going to mandate that was coming up with an alternative sentencing program. The alternative sentencing program was one to be in jail such in home arrest. And raise on or maybe instead of going to E.O.C., instead of going to R.J.L. prior to going to E.O.C., they're going to all the raises. I'm more than asked a couple of legislators, our local legislators who didn't cut down the state, the governor did release $5,000 we would go to be back to that. Our revenue of that 300,000, we've been, we've been announced 14 days dragging from the long process. Speaking with prosecutor, speaking with sheriff's office, we're still going forward, moving forward in that alternative sentencing program because it is in your area. With that, the minimum wage is passed, this is going to take up the minimum wage tax salary, $12,677, since 2022. We as the county government, we're really just like the city, we don't have a direct impact of the minimum wage, how is there direct impact? Because if you do a little work with dogs and call it minimum wage or both over $1,000 and they make big dollars in there, why would it be put that long, make the home assets in there? So with passages, I could add to the 25,000 or 25-year-old sales tax that was passed in 1993, where I already see 55% of the remaining 45% of those who do the minimum salaries in the county. And it's true due to those minimum salaries based on the population size. So we use this salary as a little different on how much it's, I can increase the civilian 10 officers to $12,600. It takes them up 26,000 to a week. I could increase the starting salary of the debtors' debt system now for 32,614 a week. That puts them in a competitive market throughout our area. It competes with women for rich and I can work well together, the police can work well together. We're seeing the same issue and getting qualified people from the academy. But I can't keep these agencies making 33,000 plus when they come down here, they go down in 2020 and we're making 32,000, they blow up all the eight counties and make their businesses. I can't keep you with that. So this will allow to increase their, the commission of the debtors' 30,614. It will make this a better market instead of, and they say it could, because I can actually increase that to start salary a little higher from what is based on the debt plan. So it's going to be more uniform based on that. So certainly not cutting it. Supervisors do the formal evaluation, make no kind of requests. They're on their way. We can decide if it is, if they receive related help. The sheriff's office provides safety and security to individuals living in the county. Take 124 to our mom, kind of the worst problem. Currently only has 16 road deputies perform that duty. They're not all on duty at the same time to record our shifts. So now we'll be able to increase the starting pay of the deputies that are working out. We're going to also be able to add six additional deputies to the road staff. That will allow us to strategically place them out in communities while schools are in possession. During the night time hours, wherever the kids are sleeping. To ensure that our communities are safe, our schools are safe. I've been able to speak with all those schools who are in this, that's a terrible service for us. A strategic replacing the deputies out in the communities would be able to make sure our kids are safe, make sure our teachers are safe, make sure schools are safe, activities that are taking place, this is what we're saying. We will do that in efforts, in an effort to make sure that we are all, our loved children, our common family, children, and I choose. We currently have one individual goes to eight, eight schools, there's seven, the eight school districts in the county to provide their program to those schools. Each young school is a school. Speaking with different tenants, they understand that I would love to be able to put a parole in a school, in each school. But the resources with this passage processes need or still not be able to be there. We'll be able to provide a strategic replacement of that to, to work with schools. And our response time will decline or become better because we will have a job near the school district or wherever, given the age of the price. I mentioned that we get 16 road deputies. We had, we didn't have a budget that after 25 years. I'm running the same, the sheriff department is running the same budget to cover the salaries of those 16 road deputies in the last 25 years. The other four did not budget it, come from the contract from the employees, these have been held for instant year. My budget's three million, 200,000 dollars. Okay? So then three comes from, comes from my 25-year-old sales tax. 25-year deal. And remaining, remaining set up comes from the contract that's listed. The reason that the sheriff department has not run, that side has not run, when we first did that facility out of Centerview in 2011, we went from a one structure building here in town that would get out 16 individuals, but it only took 16 deputies to oversee those 16 individuals. To a five-station facility out of Centerview that takes 45, triplerd staff in the jail to oversee 600 units. That budget, the sheriff, the jail side budget is eliminated on the salary side, the full value of 14,000. There's no money left. I have that money, it's always been, I would like to say I've been able to give the raises of the past, since I've been in 14, but that money is no longer there, the excess money's not there because I'm getting around and I'll say anybody for the past 25 years. What else can we do with this? We also, I mentioned in safety, with the officers, we're looking at and everything that our body does, it gets prompted and I withstand a high rank. If you figure out, you better be just walking in the park or doing with a city warder. Looking at, looking at the most land radio system currently provided and purchased, three any R radio on the local area on France. Each officer has the most land portable radio and what that does is a very catastrophic event that occurs here locally with the White House, the university, or in here on schools. If a region that comes over, Pennsyl County comes over, who's working on, solely on the most land radio system, they come to our area, we would communicate a car to car and through dispatch without having, have dispatch connected with the dispatch system. Then we're also going to install all, all vehicles that we think are our video and installing all officers with body, or body cams. So that's what our intention is to, whether money is going to be utilized for, given the passage of the processes need. And what processes need to generate, will not generate, and generate additional 40,000 dollars. It's sales tax base, not coming from the property owner solely. Johnson County is a very training town, we have people that are going with the White House, the university. So anyone that's in our county, it's simple, look for that early element of building material that we contribute to this, to the sales tax. Why not go to Walmart, spend $200, buy off, it's a additional dollar. So with that being said, that is my, that's my presentation. For your, if you have any questions, I'm going to consider that.
I do have one. If the processes need is passed, how will that tax last? Forever?
Forever. Just like one contract. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have first and second reading on an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement between the city of Warrensburg and J.C. Myers Construction Company Incorporated for Business Highway 13 Hawthorne Boulevard Roundabout Project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
Our city council's project was did the first time over here that, that can handle with the, the, the project, we agreed that it, this is for, for those who are in here, told me that they were, they were, they were, they were all whole huber type of project that's not possible, numerous issues with the packet they free spent in this city. All their, this case was J.C. Myers Construction, costs 11,000, 7,300, even after 43 dollars and 7,500. It's a project, a different crew, project crew, had a bunch of, they lost support, took his liberty to cover up my account, but then they, and on their places that they're sure were, this is probably just leading in as a basic project. This is a project that we were, we're third law, we're talking contract to have, develop the ownership of the park and this is something that we're going to make sure this is going to happen. Should it, should it, the staff that has assistant council, we did as soon as.
He'll be passed the second reading.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen? Johnson?
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement between the city of Warrensburg and J.C. Myers Construction Company Incorporated for the Business Highway 13 Hawthorne Boulevard Roundabout Project in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Next we have an ordinance changing the name of Millwood Street to Estate Drive at Hayhill Lot 158 through 187 and Track O in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
September, the city council approved this fourth phase of the cable supervision project. And that plaque had some changes that needed to be made and they made those changes and they were prepared to submit that to the city recording account. When they decided they'd like to change the name of one of the streets. And so on the far west end is the street, you can see in the map, it's turned to see it's looking on, Millwood Street was the name of the street on the plaque when it was being recorded. They would like to change that name to Estate Drive. If that's approved by ordinance deceiving, they can get that change made online prior to bring in and record it and then kind of make the, those cleaning process and have a show. So staff, and then the approval of the ordinance which would change the name of Millwood Drive to Estate Drive, that would be in this phase four as well as a future extension of that within that state.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
This is an ordinance changing the name of Millwood Street to Estate Drive at Hayhill Lots 158 through 187 and Track O in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption rejection. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, next we have an electronic weapon policy discussion. You look for it.
Madam Mayor, I'm here to the city council. Last year you all approved funding for papers for the officers and we are now implementing. You have your package of policies that we've completed. The policy has kind of taken a little piece from, from other model policies. I wanted to provide though an opportunity for Allen yourself, also our public to see the policy before it's actually implemented and provide an opportunity for some feedback. I think it's very important when you have a policy like this that involves use of force that you get input not only from elected officials but also from our community. The policy's been reviewed by the city councilor and I feel like it's got some very good controls in it to ensure that we're not using anyone and also to ensure that we're conducting ourselves in a professional way and of course with, with all the court rules and laws. There, I don't know if it takes time to go through it, but if you do have any comments or suggestions, you can let us know that in the next week. We plan on getting the weapons pulled out probably the next couple of weeks. We've got a day shit training and, or we're going to get a nut shit training. And I don't want to get everybody to see council meeting now. One of the things that I wanted to do, I think it's really important, most of you are not going to see anyone paid. So I felt like it was important for you to be able to see that for a can, for a couple reasons. One, you're going to hear about somebody getting paid once we roll these out, somebody's going to be paid, it all happens. We can't say you're paid, but a lot of people, we have, and hoping we have more strength here. Secondly, it is a very safe weapon. And so demonstrating that to you in front of our public is something I thought strongly about, so I agree to do it. And my wife will be pulling the trigger here, so. So I always wanted to take off my gun, I had to, so it was really light, so we're doing that. Chad holds one of our starters, he's like a chair.
The PD's already, the PD's already got it.
Yeah, we're on our Facebook page, it's on our Facebook Live, everyone wants to tune in.
I did notice in your, in your O.I. here that you pretty much exempted senior citizens. I'd like to thank you for the rest.
Yeah, there's some very important safeguards in there that, you know, again, the guidelines and so circumstances could change. Yeah, he's been through it, so Chad took a pro deployment during the training so that they could see how to take him off. My mother's on record as saying she's against this, so. My first, I apologize in advance.
Wait, wait, the operating instructions says three times so we can see there's two more to say.
It seemed like it was a long time.
Yeah, that's a long time.
Yeah.
I would be happy to verify the training is correct on your dog or not, you take it.
Thank you for allowing me, my head is very hard to show that I people. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, my house is standing, I'm willing to, to be good.
Thank you. Okay, next we have approval to purchase a multi-purpose truck with remaining G.O. bond funds.
I'm here in the head of the council, we just made the pass a bomb for $2 million for fire, for, for those. Through some good pricing and deal making, we were able to purchase everything that we can handle and have our works developed. What we did until the far end of the time is improve our rescue pool to a new battery hour operating line to the, to the back of the truck. We bought you trade orders to reduce the amount of vehicles we have, you can carry equipment in the trade orders, get them to a scene. And what we'd like to do now is purchase a truck, A, call trade orders, B, we'll use it as a, on a, on a, on a, we'll add a top of our tank to it when necessary. It'll be a general haul truck, it'll clear the snow off, see if you can do, and it'll do about anything we wish, we will have, it'll pack for people in smaller, more economical vehicle than one of bigger trucks, one of real easy. We got plenty of money left over with that and to outfit it and we went out for this as tragically good and charged for in the middle of America, we just council did, as low as there. Have any questions?
This, the ballot language for that bomb, unlike the, the roundabout discussion, ballot language is, we're okay with the ballot language as written.
It's being used for fire apparatus and equipment, the bomb was covered with that.
Okay.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, we have a project graduation request from Warrensburg. This is an annual request from the high school for their project graduation or drug-free night. Normally in the past, you all have approved $1,000 from the Stevenson Fund. They did not specifically ask for an amount, but they would decide to be considered, so.
Generally, I think the thousand's been very generous.
I say we just didn't a thousand, we're pretty well.
Down the good.
Okay, thank you. I think it's very important myself, so. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson? Okay, we have appearances of the council not listed on the agenda. Okay, next one we have is mayoral appointments. I would like to appoint Jason Duffy to the parks board who had a vacancy because of someone who had to resign. I think he'll be a good addition on that. Jill Wilson, and she officially didn't resign, I think it just didn't match up with her schedule. I talked to a couple of people on the board and they thought that this would be a good, a good fit, they're in a good role right now.
Move to approve, but once, I appreciate Cindy sending that to me and I'd like in the future if we could get that prior to the meeting. That way we had time.
That's my fault, I wasn't able to get ahold of the people I was trying to reach until today, so.
I just hate, I would hate to see a, a point with the mayor made and maybe I didn't research it enough. I mean, I looked into it once you sent that to me, something.
Yeah, and I know, and I'm not sure what the answer is on that, if, maybe we should just.
Even if it's just that, like, if you give me the packet on Friday, at least I'll have a weekend to kind of research and then Monday is.
She asked for it Friday and I couldn't get ahold of her.
I just think.
But I understand exactly what you're saying. Okay, thank you. Jacobs?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Johnson? Okay. All right, next we have miscellaneous matters from the mayor and for the city council. We have the city manager's report.
I don't know if a whole lot of reports to be, last week, we, last week. I don't know if a whole lot of reports seem, um, last week, we, last week, we implemented the beginning of our employment list programs. We did health screens, we had a great turnout, we had a scheduled little nurse come on the site to do that, and we still have walk-ins. And so, uh, city board, we go to the health screening done, to call five, or the financial center, we're offering to our employees. As well as the communication from the parks department, our creative resources, and we're going to have a little. You see them again, do, uh, bottomless index readings, to the wellness provider, based on their wellness program that they're providing, as part of their contract with the city. And we also, we had distracted devices to employees, to track, to monitor their health and wellness, and a better action as well. So I think it was well received, I heard good comments from employees that participated in that. And then employees that weren't able to participate in the screening specifically can go visit with their personal physician, and have a document filled out, and still participate fully in the program as well. So we've been working on that for a long time, so it's good to finally get that started, and we'll continue to phase that in and ramp that up over the coming years. The only other thing I have to report is I will be out of the office beginning Sunday, as part of the walk board. Apparently, I'm also going to volunteer to go to Miami in March, so I will be going and representing the Wibbinger Leadership Council, as well as the City of Warrensburg. This is a conference that will discuss partnership between communities and their, their military installations. And how we can be better partners together to meet the needs of, of the military going forward. And so I think it's a worthwhile endeavor, yeah, Dr. Wheeler, the Knobnester School District Superintendent will be there as part of the panel. As well as Joe Drew School, a military advocate for the state, will be there. And then there will be some leadership from our Whitey Air Force Base that will be there as well. So I thought it would be a good opportunity to go and support them also, and build better relationships with them. And, and either support them, or know that Warrensburg cares about that, and that we want to do what's necessary on our side to make sure that they're successful in their missions. So with that, I don't think I have anything else to report at this time.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
On the section with the census, because the base, I don't know if this is for you or for our, because the base will be accounting for military personnel. Do you foresee that requiring the same budget for the marketing campaign for the census? Or the, I don't know if you call it marketing or education campaign?
Yeah, I think, so the last time we were able, we had a person from the local affairs office, or the readiness center, I'm not sure which, served on our committee. But they weren't able to do much promotion on base, so none, very little of that money was actually spent on the base side of messaging. I think it was the readiness center. So the majority of the money was spent last time, like on billboards, radio, advertising, giveaways, when we did do public events, and. Four thousand and pizza from Sidexo, in kind type of thing. So I, I don't know that with, the, the vegetable need to be as large as the last time, given that kind of the way you message is different since it was ten years ago. But I wouldn't see that changing the budgets needed.
I just want to say too, my trip down to Miami, certainly, that means a paid vacation, a tax period, why wouldn't I, leadership council, she's paying my expenses to go down. So the city of Miami, what would it cost?
Sure you learned a lot.
I'm looking forward to it. The one, the American Defensive Communities Conferences in DC, last couple of years have been very good, very informational. This will be down a little more than nuts and bolts of how we as communities really help, so.
I'll be there, there's Sunday.
I'll be back really, really late Wednesday night.
Very good. Okay, Director of Finance's report?
We are getting ready to kick off our fourth annual budget follow-up contest this year. In the past, we've limited the entries to one per person, this year we're opening it up to as many as we're wanting to say, just to get more entries in. Hope to get, hope to get more entries than last year, it kind of fell off our pace from previous year. We did have two more entries than, than previous year last year, but it's all important.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Is that something that you would be able to add into the entry, that those rights would be able to be provided to any of the partnering organizations, like for the city's website, or for WCDB, or the, you know, Main Street or Chamber? I don't know who would be included in that, but I know sometimes they're struggling for imagery for their own Marcy has the guys right now. But I don't know if that's just a, a Doug thing, to put a clause in there?
First of all, the release of that, because it was a pretty, it's a purpose, I didn't really have to go in to share that.
To include maybe the partnership organizations?
No, Doug's not even saying it, so.
Yeah, well then, I did just want to kind of follow up on the franchise taxes. Went, went down 1.6% overall. Had a, had a good month in January, but that mostly because of the, the gas, and some electrical. But who was in the, in the next few, how much of electrical will probably be there? Oh, great deal, as, as some rebates and new things will give back to, to customers in our area.
Will that just be a month, or?
I'm not sure, I, I've heard people say that they've gotten rebates on, uh, back-to-back statements.
So my understanding is there's an on-time rebate, but then they lost the way, reduction in rates that's locked in for five years. So that, that will see for a period of time, but the, the burger base, most of the things, might be that's a on-time rebate.
A lot of red on the motor vehicle collections, is that probably tied to, to Dior?
I'm, I'm guessing that we just haven't seen, uh, I happen to have the main sales, uh, we had previously. I don't know if that was because of that small increase in the gas, or, or a little bit of that, and it kind of went down, I'm not sure what, what, uh, collection of that. Yeah, we're just not, we're, we just haven't seen a big, uh, big sale.
Probably correlation to the last two months of the weather, too.
Yep.
I know real estate and roads correlation has seen that, so I imagine car sales are the same, but.
Probably, yeah.
Thank you. Bye.
Well, I'm really excited about Matthew's photo contest, I think I can win that for a picture of Apollo. Uh, yeah, I was pretty thrilled with the weakness, uh, I got a gun, and we were prepared to be there, and it's there, and we're going to come back. Just, uh, true, uh, Chris, if I see that, we'll be hoping to handle, moving through that, period, what's, you know, because he doesn't say. There's a update for our signal project, we've got a signal problem along, uh, we just have, uh, staff to find out through the presentation of the next council meeting. To show some of the information, and how they operate, so, uh, council, we have to see that we monitor what's in place for signals. Probably problems are involved, we've got, we're probably working with, uh, this bar, the equipment, uh, whether you're in contract, you have to maintain those measures. And, uh, we don't have assistance to handle, we're, we're, we're going to see if they, uh, can evolve that, you know, for the, for the system, so. Uh, the, the whole council will order that next month. Uh, one thing that I apologize to the council, or one I was missing, uh, this is, I'm going to jump out, because the, the sources on that. We had the T D D, like, uh, the $100, that, that, that was a pleasure to handle, uh, coming out of Joe Ross, uh, Joe, uh, finishing the project. These are working up to do all our projects, um, within, uh, the dollars, the, 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 the station, uh, the, 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 this project costs, so, that's all.
Do you, I don't know if you guys have seen it yet, but over on Cooper, the, that's plastic going around the light, that's metal what it is, but that's, it's, somebody busted that off, I don't know whether it got it, or the truck hit it, or. But yeah, it's all, it's the whole side, the whole left side of the, um, light is busted off of it.
Oh, okay.
On Cooper.
The shield off.
Right, yeah, the shield, that's, that's plastic.
We, we gained a lot of hearts for signal, uh, for this project, so we have a, uh, how higher they are, the true life possibility of the issue.
Just how did we set that light there, and then you guys like, already? Yeah, so. And then on, on this here, so everything that's, so the stuff that's in red is going to be an area that can't be driven on during the maintenance times?
Yeah, well, we, we called it off, or in, uh, after expression, uh, it's just on our, uh, business, with that. I have a, here's all the, uh, uh, they have, you know, equipment, and so we, uh, but, uh, as you see, uh, the, 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 uh, we will be in a place, uh, to, to, uh, we really want to try to work out, so, uh, we're just, we do not at this time. Uh, they scheduled, now, this, we'll see what's out, we'll, uh, from contract, and everything's perfect.
And they scheduled how this, we'll see what's out at the time, uh, from contact, uh, pretty start, uh, maybe we will get that information, two little spark, uh, he didn't ask. So, the vendors came, we just pulled off a period of time, whatever.
So it looks like once phase two goes into effect, you're pretty much not going to go, you're not going to go across thirteen to get there.
We're not able to go across now, once we get into the phase three, we, uh, the vendors, I can, I have something I would like to add. Uh, the, 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 to, to, we'll be all.
This little road right here in blue, is it going to?
It is a crossover that allows people access, uh, to get up, uh, onto this thirteen, a little north now, or they're coming out. Of course, that old thirteen, or, uh, old hose to go there, uh, in the end, and, uh, the crux, the area that has accessibility at one of the.
And I'm guessing that'll be closed off after the road is reopened?
Yes. So the one fairer, you see, you know, there's a long, a third area, so we've got a long way, because it's just a sector, a little way, that will, probably get rid of, uh, with this project.
The little piece going across the grass?
No, also, they have a piece, they have a long fairer, a long piece, it's not that serious, uh, it's a long, it's a, uh, it's a little.
Like permanently?
This is county.
All right, thank you, Freyman.
Go ahead.
Marcy?
Um, last Tuesday, we were just to launch our education campaign regarding the logging tax increase, that measures on April second, uh, general municipal election. Uh, we have almost twenty presentations scheduled, um, from, from last Tuesday right up to election day, uh, to present the information regarding the, the logging tax. Uh, after presentation with Rotary, I headed on to Justice, uh, attended Capitol Days, and was able to meet with ten state representatives and a state senator from our area and Kansas City area as well. And educate them on impact of tourism, uh, for our area and in the city as well. They were blown away when I was able to tell them Johnson County has over two thousand tourism-related jobs, and there was over sixty-three million in tourism spending in two thousand eighteen. So able to convey that information to them was a real positive, so.
Okay, thank you.